Welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. Tonight's presentation will be on the potential sale of approximately 120 acres of land owned by the City of Casa Grande at Penal Avenue and Hopi Drive. Mr. Rains, floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the Penal-Hopi land offer that has been made to the City of Casa Grande. I thought what we would do in this study session tonight, I know the mayor and council is aware of that there is a related item that the mayor and council could potentially be taking action on during the regular meeting, but I thought that it would be, excuse me, good for the, for the mayor and council and our public to have a bit of a history lesson on this property itself and talk a little bit about what I consider to be some clear potential options for the, for the use of this land. I think it's important to note before I get into the PowerPoint presentation that ultimately this is just the start of, of the project. This is, this is the consideration of the land, the sell, the selling of the land. That would actually, if the mayor and council elects to sell the land through entering into a land purchase agreement with the proposer, then ultimately there are conditions that are placed on that. There would, escrow would actually open, but essentially there are other components such as a rezoning that would be required for the, for the property to actually move into a closing state. And so I want to make sure that everybody is, is clear with that. And so just moving forward in the PowerPoint presentation, and I've got about 25 slides. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to make sure I can speak throughout this presentation, and I apologize, but I'm going to try to move rather quickly, but I do want everyone to know that throughout the process, as we've entertained this particular proposal, we have fielded questions, both from the council as well as from some of our citizens. Our mayor and council has received, much like staff, some questions recently, and I hope to have some answers that I can provide tonight for the mayor and council's clarification as well. But what we're talking about is a 120-acre parcel that ultimately adjoins Penal Avenue, Ghost Hollow, or, excuse me, Ghost Ranch Road to the north, and Hopi Drive to the south. The, you will see that in what I would consider to be in this slide, what would be your upper right-hand component, there is 40 acres that when, when the city acquired this property, was retained by the current property owner at that point, and they do have development ambitions as well. Nothing that is, nothing that has been presented, but they have, they have retained it specifically for development purposes. This particular slide ultimately provides what I consider to be a very good overview of the activity in the area. You can see the subject site clearly identified and the various development that is either underway today, that has been, that has been in place for some time, and/or as well as the Copper Mountain Ranch development that is actually north and west of the particular site. I think it is important to note that there are some areas that are westernly from the site that are not in the city limits today. They are, they are currently in the county, and I think most of you are familiar with that, with the specific area. As far as the property details are concerned, a couple of the points that I want to make as we move into this, because I think they become important topics for discussion, is number one is that, that 120 acres is comprised of two parcels. One particular parcel that's 100 acres and the other that is 20. It is currently in our land use plan, in our 2030 general plan is community corridor. I'll talk a little more about that. And the current zoning on the site is urban ranch, and I, and I know that all of you are aware of this, but for the benefit of those that may be watching or listening, the purpose of an urban ranch residential zoning is provide principally for the development of single-family detached dwelling units at a very low density and to provide for the establishment and/or maintenance of a wide range of agricultural uses. I think this becomes very important as, as we get into some of the other discussions. It's highly likely that, that in order for this property to ever develop in anything other than, well, really anything given the current water circumstances, it would have to be rezoned. I did add, I know I had sent the mayor and council a draft presentation last week. I did add this particular slide just to give everybody a context of the general land uses around it. And you'll see if you, if you look up at the upper, and this is not really the best specific slide, I know the planners do a much better job of identifying this. This is what happens when the city manager tries to take a PDF and put it into a PowerPoint. You'll see it is the, it is what I consider to be the pinkish area around the blue off of Penal Avenue is, is your community corridor there, and it is generally situated around the neighborhood's land use category. As far as the community corridor land use category, and it was, and this, and if, if Mr. Tice were here tonight, he would tell you that this particular section, this area on Penal Avenue was intentionally given this land use designation because it provides a lot of flexibility, if you will, and it's on one of our primary transportation corridors. And so land uses that you might find, specific land uses that you might, that might be identified within a community corridor land use are medium and high-density residential, commercial, mixed residential, commercial, office, medical, campus, hospital, restaurant, bars, brew pubs, entertainment, hospitality, education, or public facilities. So essentially, you can see there's a broad category of uses that, that could, could actually falls into this land use category itself. If I can, I'll move into the history of the ownership of this land and, and really what's transpired since we acquired it in 2008. The mayor and council voted unanimously to acquire 100 acres of this property, that's the one parcel that I spoke about, it's the larger parcel, and accepted a donation of 20 acres from the Hopi Road LLC in the amount of $4.7 million. The transaction closed in November of 2008, and the proposed use at the time of acquisition was to develop the site for a future regional park. Development impact fees were utilized to acquire the two parcels, which again becomes an important component on the use of any proceeds that may transpire. And, and I believe all of you, perhaps excluding council member Lavender, will recall that in 2017, the mayor and council voted unanimously to acquire 140-acre parcel of land directly west of the Ed Hooper Park-Paul Mason Sportsplex at a, at a much lower cost basis, in better proximity to existing recreational amenities and adjacent to public infrastructure. That really began to drive some of the activity that transpired on this, on this holding thereafter. In 2017, the consensus of the organization was to focus on the development of the 140 acres, and we've started the planning there. I know the mayor and council is aware of some of our capital improvement programming and expansion of the Ed Hooper Park, and to essentially put the 120-acre parcel that we had acquired in 2008 on the market. At that point in time, the thought was that we would allow the development community to evaluate the highest and best use of the land, and I'll, I'll move into some of the specific details that I suspect that they evaluated. In June of 2018, the city releases a request for qualifica, qualification for commercial real estate broker services, and in September of 2018, the city enters into an exclusive listing agreement with Nathan &amp; Associates to market and sell the parcels. The city did not receive any interest or any proposals in 2018 and 2019, so there was a year that had lapsed, and we did extend the listing agreement with Nathan &amp; Associates for a period of one year. I think it is important to note that the, that the city did receive two letters of interest to develop the property as a manufactured home development in the amount of approximately $25,000 an acre. Both of those were rejected primarily because of the potential loss from the basis that we had paid when we acquired the, the property. Yes, Mr. Powell?
We were, Headquest, you know him?
Yes.
And we were over on that side of the, in a Jeep going around, and there's some area out there that has really been leveled out. It looks like they're prepared to do something, I'm not sure what it is.
There, there are, there are some areas on this particular parcel that were, that were what I consider to be improved from a standpoint with, with the city and the county because of some of the flood, flooding that was occurring on that corner there. I do know for a fact that the county built a retention basin in the county north of this, and there were some improvements that we did in order to try to essentially control the flows that were coming down that corridor. And there is a, there is a slide that shows the, at least the schematic of the proposal by the, by the potential buyer that will, and I can describe that a little bit more of what ultimately what the plan would be under that particular development pattern.
Drainage is going to be...
Drainage, yes, that's correct. In, in January of 2002, the city received a letter of intent from Asset Management Partners LLC in the amount of $57,000 per acre for the purpose of constructing a 480-unit manufactured housing development, and staff commissioned a comparable market analysis on recent sales in the area. That's typically what we're going to do when we are disposing of land. We're, we're going to evaluate the proposal against what the fair market value conditions are, and at the time of the analysis, larger property purposes, and I was looking, we were looking for anything 80 acres and above, ultimately was ranging from 30,000 to 80,000. So the 57,500 appeared to be in the, in the range. Most of that, most of those comparables, at least in my opinion, really were influenced by current zoning of those parcels as well as the proximity to infrastructure. Yes, Mr. Powell?
Larry, do they plan any agricultural housing or residential in that area at all?
The, I'll, I'll answer the question, Mr. Powell. Some of this I've, I've got specifically in the slideshow, but ultimately they are proposing what they consider to be an attainable housing, manufactured housing development, and, and I've, I've gone as far as to have obtained some information from them related to the costs associated with their products. As far as, as far as other developments, that's essentially what they're proposing to do, 480 units in this site. If I can, just spend a few minutes on the letter of intent that was submitted by the, by the company. They, they had proposed to acquire the two parcels of land, which is comprised of approximately 120 buildable acres, and I know very early on that was a question that was raised by staff as to what was included in the 120 acres, and it specifically is aligned with this drainage issue that really transpires along Penal Avenue. Ultimately, ultimately, they have indicated that they would be, that they anticipate using the 120, the full 120 acres to achieve some of the drainage issues that they're going, some of the drainage improvements that they need. The purchase price shall be 6.9 million, subject to the adjustments and reduction of buildable acres, I just spoke about that, which will equate, equate to a prorata reduction in the purchase price of $57,500 per acre. And then ultimately, the, this is where the conditions come in, and this why, why it's important to note that tonight is just ultimately the, the land component of this versus the development side of it. The two parcels shall be zoned to allow for manufactured home development with 480 home sites with a minimum lot sizes of 50 by 100. Each site will be individually metered for water, sewer, gas, cable, and phone. The sites will be professionally landscaped. The development will include a community clubhouse, swimming pool, playground, and dog park. Some of, some of these conditions obviously are for the city's intent. Some of these are obviously for the developers' purposes. Just from a logistics perspective, what they would propose is that $150,000 of earnest money be deposited upon opening escrow. Earnest money will become non-refundable once the due diligence period of 180 days and zoning approval are completed. The purchase may extend due diligence period for one 30-day period. The close of escrow for the site and transfer of the property shall occur within 90 days following the due diligence period. So essentially what they're, what, what the next step in this would be, if the council is, is desires to move forward with the land sale, would be a application for a rezone. At the time of the closing, the purchase price approximately 6.75 million shall be made to the purchaser, and developer shall initiate construction no later than nine months after securing permits, and the purchaser may request one six-month extension. There's been some discussions, and I'm sure you've seen in the purchase agreement, the city has elected to essentially add a, what we consider to be a clawback provision, that if development doesn't occur, that we would have the option to repurchase this property. Cost of zoning entitlements will be the responsibility of the purchaser, so essentially they would hire the firm and go through the application process. However, all the costs would be credited to the purchase price, subject to the approval of the city at the closing. The city will be responsible for paying a broker's fee of 6% to land advisors, who is the broker who presented the LOI. And so this gives you what I consider to be their schematic layout, their, their initial blush of what they would actually, they would actually propose in the 480, 480 sites within the 120 acres. As you can see, a couple of what I consider to be important elements of this particular proposal, and keep in mind, this would have to be finalized and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission with all of the various planning components that would be necessary. But the, the points that I point out would be that they anticipate that their main entry would happen off of Ghost Ranch Road, and we've received a couple of questions specifically about transportation, and I want to address some of those tonight. And the second component is that drainage improvement that Mr. Powell was, was speaking about. They, they are proposing at first blush to actually build a greenbelt area along that wash into that corner to, to ultimately convey the, the drainage that would, would, the runoff that actually comes through this particular site. There are some encumbrances with that. It's abundantly clear when you look at this map that you can see the various, the various channels, for lack of better words, that have been developed over the year by the runoff. Some of this has been resolved by that retention basin that the county has, has built, but at the end of the day, they would be responsible for carrying the flows through their development and meeting all of our, all of our drainage improvement requirements that are under our city code. This, this just summarizes what they're proposing. A master plan, community, 480 home sites, minimum lot size of 50 by 100, professionally landscaped lots, community clubhouse with fitness, game room, flex space, swimming pool, and outdoor recreation space, playgrounds, dog parks, masonry, perimeter wall with professionally landscaped grounds, and off-street parking and sidewalks. So as, as I had pointed out, there's been questions that have, have been raised, both by council, as you learned about the letter of, the letter of interest, as well as by some of our residents that have, have read about it in the Casa Grande Dispatch, and I thought I would summarize those because I think it's important for us to, to provide an overview of the questions that have been raised, and, and quite frankly, the majority of these responses have come from the developer, and you'll see, I typically will write those in quotes if, if it's coming from them and, and not if it's coming from me. But will the development acquire the full 120 acres? I think I've covered that already, that they're anticipating that in order to build the 480-site community at four homes per acre, they would use the full 120 acres. Will the city retain any of the unused land? The developer plans to retain undeveloped land for various elements of the project, primarily the drainage area that I spoke about earlier. What is the average price for a three-bedroom unit? Homes in the 15 to 100, 1800 square foot range typically sell for $95,000 plus. I do have a broader example here in a second of this. These homes are three or four bedrooms with two baths. What are the typical monthly lot rents? The typical lot rent is approximately $500 per month. This fee provides residents with a use of amenities, clubhouse, pool, playground, dog park, as well as community events, clubs, and parties. Professional onsite management is important, and I think that is an important note. I know that we've fielded a couple of questions about that from residents over the past couple of days. This particular development provides professional onsite. They, they have covenants and restrictions that the homeowners actually have to abide by, much like an HOA. I think the difference is, is that they have onsite property management. Do residents pay property taxes? Residents will not pay property taxes because the land is owned by the developer. They're essentially leasing a lot. There, there is not, property taxes are not paid by the homeowner. They are paid by the developer. There is a personal property tax component that is paid at the time that the, that the manufactured home is sold, and, and I've got in the next example, an analysis of what those full costs might look like.
Larry, taxes are paid. There's property taxes that'll be paid on this property.
Yeah, the, the property taxes are paid by the developer, yes. What is an average all-in monthly cost to resident? One of the most popular models today is the Clayton Loft model, which is a 1568-square-foot three-bedroom, two-bath model. When you consider the invoice price of the home, a shed that gets built with, with all of these properties, and the, the personal property tax that I talked about, and likely sales tax, the average price of this home is $119,417. The monthly amortized payment is $1,040. The monthly lot rent is 500, so a total monthly fee, a total monthly cost expenditure to the property owner of $1,540.
How about 100?
What is the average age of residents in a traditional family development, which this is proposed, traditional family? They've indicated that in their other properties, they typically, the, the average age is 30 to 39 years old. This, this is a traditional family development that they're proposing.
Larry, are they guaranteeing that's $500? It's not a sliding scale? It's going to stay 500, won't change over the years?
They, they indicated that they, they, that $500 is an average, that it could be less in Casa Grande, that they would, that they would be evaluating that. Rents can adjust. They, they ultimately can adjust the leases. They, ultimately what ends up happening here, and I have a, a question in a second, that the, these are month-to-month leases that are entered into ultimately with a one- or two-year window, forward-looking window, so they usually stay consistent for a couple of years, but the developer would have the ability to adjust those rents at, at their, essentially at their leisure. What is the current median listed home price in Casa Grande? And this is for a site-built home. This, this is, this data is obviously changing on a very regular basis. The information that I was able to come up with last week indicated that the average median price of a home in Casa Grande is $350, at, so essentially at $208 a square foot. And so if you took the 1568, you would be looking at a residential home of roughly $326,000 in, in today's market. Obviously, today's market is changing, and likely this information would change accordingly if, if we were to test that in the future. One of the big questions that's been asked is if this is a low-income project, affordable, affordable housing project. And, and so I, I think it's important to note that this is not, this is, this is not a federally subsidized rent subsidy type of a project. This is a project where the developer ultimately covers all of, obtains the financing, covers the cost of the infrastructure, and ultimately puts that into their business model. The affordability term is applied when considering the price of a manufactured home versus a stick-built home on a square foot base, basis. The industry prefers to use the term attainable or achievable housing. These are their words. Housing at, at these price points are more attainable for middle-income earners is really where their target, target market is located. What are the lease terms of a lot in the proposed development? Lot leases are one-month leases to provide full flexibility when someone needs to move. If a resident purchases a home and decides to move as a life event happens, they can sell the home and move at any time. The home can be sold by the owner, listed with local brokers, or the team onsite can help sell it for, can help, can put it on the market and, and sell it through their property management team. What are the, but back to Councilwoman Fitzgibbon's point, obviously, they have control over the, the leases in there, and it, they actually establish those based on their, based on their business model. The projection that they're looking at at this point is roughly $450 to $500 a month.
Well, Larry, and it just surprises me. I don't know many people that have one-month leases, and I get where it says provide full flexibility when someone needs to move, but who's going to sell their house in one month?
No, I think, I think essentially what they're indicating is that there's not any type of a penalty if they were to not hold it for a year. So what you're going to find in all of these, because of the certificate of assured water supply issue, these will, these will, the entire property will be owned by the developer, and essentially they structure these lease agreements to allow the flexibility that will establish a rate for a longer period of time, maybe one, two, three years, but ultimately give, give the homeowner the, the ability to, to actually terminate that with a 30-day notice.
Larry, go over one more time. The, if you have the lease and the water, how are you tied on the water?
Each individual property has its own individual meter that, so they'll have a meter for, for, for electrical, for water, and, and will have a sewer connection, and, and a cable and telephone. Each of those, each lot will have their own individual connection.
Is it four a lot?
Pardon me?
Four homes a lot?
Four homes per acre.
Acre, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. What are the, yes, Councilman?
Are you going to get into the infrastructure at some point, or?
In, in what regards to the infrastructure?
I mean, where's the water and, and the sewer? Would it be city sewer, or?
I, I am not, that is, that is the data that they're collecting as part of the due diligence, but there, but my understanding is, is that, that there is both water and sewer infrastructure along Penal Avenue that they would be connecting to.
Okay, thanks.
What are the typical mortgage rates and down payment requirements? Again, this is another question that has, has been, that has been raised. The interest rates for these manufactured home loans are higher than mortgage rates, right? They, they typically are going to run somewhere in the vicinity of 6% to 9%. So the interest rates are greater than an interest rate that you, that an individual may pay on a site-built home. The, the, the down payments are very similarly situated. A lot of it has to do with the individual who's making the application's credit, but typically what you're going to find is that the down payment would range somewhere between 6% and 20% on these, on these properties, which is very similar to a site-built home. But, but typically what you're going to find is that the, the mortgage interest rates are, are higher. That's simply because of the, the, the fact that there's not a secondary market in these types of mortgages. That's, I did talk to a mortgage person last Friday, she did confirm that, and, and so, you know, they, they can top out at 9% or 10% in today's market. What is the current median listed home price in Casa Grande? The median price of a home in Casa Grande is 350?
I'm going backwards.
I'm sorry.
We already did that stuff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm going backwards, okay.
I'm just getting the vice down.
And I just talked a little bit about the down payment requirement, 6% to 20%. Again, it's based on the credit and the type of financing that's available, but what, what the developer did indicate, they, they actually, this particular developer offers a financing, they, they have a, they have a relationship, a partnership with a financing committee, a financing company, and typically what they're, what they've indicated is that on the model that we talked about a bit ago, the 1568-square-foot, that, that the typical down payment on that would be $10,000. What would a typical monthly mortgage and cost be to a residential home of $325,000 with a 10% down payment? That, and I, this is a number that I ran, I simply ran the mortgage, a mortgage calculator at 325 minus the $32,500 down payment, which is... A lot of it has to do with the individual who's making the applications credit. But typically, what you're going to find is that the down payment would range somewhere between 6% and 20% on these properties, which is very similar to a site-built home. But typically, what you're going to find is that the mortgage interest rates are higher. That's simply because of the fact that there's not a secondary market in these types of mortgages. I did talk to a mortgage person last Friday. She did confirm that. And so, you know, they can top out at 9% or 10% in today's market. What is the current median listed home price in Casa Grande? The median price of a home in Casa Grande is $350?
You went backwards.
I'm sorry.
We already did that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm going backwards, okay. And I just talked a little bit about the down payment requirement, 6% to 20%. Again, it's based on the credit and the type of financing that's available. But what the developer did indicate, they actually, this particular developer offers a financing, they have a relationship, a partnership with a financing committee, a financing company, and typically what they've indicated is that on the model that we talked about a bit ago, the 1,568 square foot, that the typical down payment on that would be $10,000. What would a typical monthly mortgage and cost be to a residential home of $325,000 with a 10% down payment? That, and I, this is a number that I ran. I simply ran the mortgage calculator at 325 minus the $32,500 down payment, which is what you would be facing with a site-built home. Depending, you would likely end up having to pay PMI, so it'd be $1,995. And once the PMI was satisfied, it would reduce to $1,870. These numbers do include, these numbers do include property taxes, an estimate for property taxes, and estimate for insurance. And I think the last question that I have, and then I want to go over a couple that have come into my office today. Will a perimeter wall be built along Penal Avenue as part of the development? And the answer is yes. The discussion that we've had very preliminarily with them is whether or not we would want that on the outside of the green belt area where the drainage canal would go, or on the inside of that. So those are, those are types of questions that would ultimately be worked out as part of the, a part of the development plan if the project moves forward. Yes, Mr. Powell?
Larry, how is sewer handled?
There is a sewer line in Penal Avenue. They would connect, they would...
Down which one?
I believe, Mr. Powell, I'm not 100% certain about that, but my understanding is that they would sewer from north to south with a connection on Penal Avenue. If I can, Mr. Mayor, and I...
Are there any amenities that the owner establishes, swimming pools, golf carts? I mean, those type of things, that the amenities would be there? I haven't seen it say anything, so I'm asking. That's all there is in this presentation.
Right. The, it is, the development includes all of the amenities that I've mentioned, from the clubhouse to a swimming pool to park areas and the like. Those are part of the lease payment that they make every month of $500. They have access to those particular amenities with this particular development. Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, there was a question specifically asked about, about whether or not these are rental units, or if they're owned by the property owners. The focus of this developer is that they are owned by the property owner, that they're selling the manufactured home. They can allow for rental units based on market conditions, but in essence, all of their residents within their development have to go through some level of background check and agree to community rules. So that's part of this developer's protocols. And today and their other developments, they have no, are considered to be rental units that they're renting in their other developments. The other question that has come up that is specific to transportation, I had mentioned that the access point was on Ghost Ranch Road. There's been some questions about whether or not a traffic signal would be required on Penal Avenue and Ghost Ranch Road. And the Phase 2 of Ghost Hollow Estates is actually triggering a traffic signal there, so that will come as part of that development. So these folks would essentially be paying development impact fees towards that, towards that particular traffic signal. And let me just move on to, at least from my perspective, to the two questions that the mayor and council should be considering tonight, and that is, do the mayor and council wish to dispose of the property? And if so, when? Do we want, do we want to hold on to this? Do we not? Do we want to sell immediately? And the second question is, is the property best suited for a development of this nature? I think those are really the two questions. And I believe that there's three, what I consider to be three, I keep on going backwards with this thing. Elements that are three options that the mayor and council could consider tonight, but if I can just go through what I consider to be, what our team considers to be, some of the primary issues to consider on this particular property. The first and foremost is that this particular area will not, under today's current requirements through ADWR, will not be, cannot be subdivided in anything greater than five lots. And it's important to note that when I say five lots, that's for, although we own two parcels, it's a combination of both parcels, the max that we could ultimately divide, it could be subdivided as in five lots. And essentially, at least there's some indication that when the development community was looking at this, when we put it on the market, they ultimately were looking at projects that would not require a certificate of assured water supply. And that drove the highest and best, highest and best use for their offers. Yes, Mr. Powell?
Very south of this, there's an awful lot of livestock and arenas and those type of things. Is that something that would be able to be used on that if they want to? Or what would the story be?
You know, Mr. Powell, I would have to specifically ask, I'd specifically have to ask them. I don't, that has not come up in any of the questions that I've asked.
If you drive through the south, and there's a lot of, a lot of nice buildings, a lot of nice corrals and those type of things, and there's a lot of good desert to ride in in that mountain out there, so I don't know.
Right. And I think it becomes one of the options for the mayor and council to consider tonight is preserving that particular area. I do think that a couple of the other issues that need to be considered as you're evaluating the use of this land is, Penal Avenue is a gateway. This is, this is, has very close proximity to Interstate 10. It is an entry point to the community. I've talked about the urban ranch zoning already. There's been questions about whether or not there's any other manufactured home developments that are coming in, that are being proposed in this area. I can tell you that there is a potential of one, that we've had discussions with a potential developer related to a manufactured home development just south of this particular area, but they've not made any specific applications at this point. A couple of other items that I think are very important are the build-out of Florence Boulevard. Obviously, once Florence Boulevard is built out with commercial development, it'll begin to shift to Penal because of the transportation corridor. And then lastly, the community corridor land use, which allows for what I consider to be a variety of uses, and could lend itself to be a mixed-use area as well. And I just reemphasize that, again, for everybody's benefit, that tonight's decision is only on the potential acquisition of the land. It is, there is a zoning component, so that means that there will be, going before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and any decision related would be coming to the mayor and council on a potential rezone. And quickly, Mr. Mayor, to my options, to the options, obviously, I believe there's three viable options. The first option is retain ownership and use for governmental purposes. It's what we've talked about. You've heard Mayor Pro Tim Powell talk a little bit about the preservation for recreation and/or just open space. We could, the mayor and council may elect to support the proposed land acquisition and development use. Obviously, as you've seen this evening, and in the LOI that's been submitted to the mayor and council, and the third option would be reject the land acquisition development proposal and develop a process and plan for a future mixed-use development and rezone in the property accordingly to the market prior to marketing. I think it's important to note that that is the one element that, at least from our perspective, we're not 100% sure what the market would look like. What we do know is that it would likely be a five, if we did do some level of mixed use, it would likely be a five-lot development that would be proposed, and we would market either collectively or separately. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll entertain any questions.
Mayor? I was getting asked, and you kind of alluded to it, we did purchase this with development impact fees in 2008, and so I think that those funds would have to go back into the DIF fund, or I would think they'd be restricted at some point if we elected to go forward with this?
We have actually looked into that particular component and that particular question. Essentially, what we would be encouraged to do is utilize any proceeds in buying and actually making capital improvements in the recreational field. So essentially, we could use that to build recreational amenities around the city.
Okay. And I guess we're gonna talk about this again later, so maybe...
I have some questions, now's the time to ask.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to give you back on what Lisa had asked, Larry, I want to make sure I understand this. So they, people buy it, and at any time they can sell it. Do the developers have the right to approve the sale and who they're selling to? Because in my research, some of them do that, and others don't. So I'm just curious on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McBride, it strikes me that based on the response that I was given related to them, to each owner, each resident of the development having to go through some level of check and reference, if you will, that they likely would, they likely are going to be involved in the sales that take place in some form or fashion. I can't tell you exactly how or what, but it strikes me that there's probably going to be some due diligence that is conducted on the part of the property management company onsite. Mr. Powell, go ahead. No, go ahead. That's who was calling on you.
I'm just curious, the, those little hills out there by the wash are federal. And would we want to extend what we have behind the rodeo grounds in addition to that to the west? At least look at that.
In the 140-acre site that we've acquired west of the Ed Hooper Park, we have not really explored additional acquisition there, but it is something that we have, that we have discussed, but we've not, we've not really looked into potential. There is some state land pieces back there as well, and, but nothing specific.
Yeah, when you leave the rodeo grounds going west, you used to run into a fence, and now that's changed, but I was just curious about how they're gonna handle that.
Right. He said, oh.
Excuse me, one more thing.
Okay. Go ahead.
There's an Indian village out there. There's antiquities in the ground, right in front of those little hills. You can dig for about an hour, and you'll have a whole lot of pottery in your hands. If it rains, you can see the walls, the skeletons of the villagers that used to live there. That little hill was where they could look out, and then that wash that comes, that big gulch that comes by would be where their water source was. I don't know. We talked about that some time ago, but it didn't go anywhere, so I don't know.
My understanding, Mayor Pro Tim Powell, is that that is actually located on the state land, the state trust holding.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on, Lisa?
Well, a few questions, but mainly comments. I just wanted to thank you, Larry, for providing this information to us. I think when it was originally presented to us, we didn't have all this information, and I really wish we would have, but I just think it's fair for us to do our due diligence and make sure that we're open and honest to the community on what we can do with this property. So as we learned today, we are able to sub, not subdivide, do a minor land division of up to five lots, and I think it's important for us to acknowledge that and see what the best direction is for the city to go. So I know many of these questions are mine, and I really appreciate it, again, because I think it's fair for us to, you know, let the public know where we are. I really have no problem at all with manufactured homes. I definitely think there's a need. I think, you know, as we see, we have several of them coming up into our community, but my big concern with this is that this is city property. I mean, of course, if it's private property, people can do whatever they want, but the city, the community owns these 120 acres, and I just don't know if this is the vision, you know, that we want on the main corridor coming into our community. Again, nothing against manufactured homes, but I think when you have people commuting into our community that are coming into these manufacturing, you know, sites, you know, we have all these jobs coming in our industrial area, I just think that we need more on that main road to satisfy the general population. So we see on Facebook and other places, people expressing concerns of the lack of grocery stores, the lack of gas stations, the lack of restaurants, the lack of entertainment on that side of our community. And many of these people don't even feel that they're part of our community because they live a little bit on the outskirts, but they really shouldn't. I mean, that's a main entry into the community. So as I mentioned to our last meeting, I truly believe that this is a lack of vision if we settle for 480 manufactured homes on the main entryway into our community. However, if this is something that the community wants, I think we're, we're bystepping in a very important step, and that is public input and public hearings. I understand that if it's sold, there's a condition, if it doesn't pass through planning and zoning, that it'll, you know, come back and, you know, the sale won't go through. But, you know, but if we vote on this today, we're telling the community, sorry, we don't really care what you say, planning and zoning, because the city council and mayor approve of this. So that's my concern. I just, in the last meeting, I did, you know, the city of Phoenix does these area plans, and I think it's important to get, since it's city property, that it's important to get the community's input, and we can develop an area plan. I like your option three. I think that we need to look at a process and a plan to, you know, for future mixed-use development and plan accordingly, and whether it's zoning now to help that development come along, whatever that is. But I really, really think this is a lack of vision if we approve this, and especially when we know there are other viable options that might be better for our community and the future of growth of Casa Grande.
Bob?
I just have a simple question. The layout that we saw of the park with all the home spaces in there, it did look like it had a lot of open space within the park. Has there been any numbers assigned to that? Do we know how much percentage of open space we're looking at?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, I don't know if they have or not. This particular schematic was done very early in the process, simply to give everybody a context of what they may be proposing. What I would suggest is that, number one, I can certainly ask if they've moved to that point in the due diligence. I don't know that they have, because that's typically when you're gonna get your design team involved, but what I can say is that they are very willing to meet our city code requirements and with the other types of requirements that are there. So I suspect that the open space is one that they plan to meet our general requirement for that. But I can check to see if they've got a specific...
No problem. I was just curious. It looked like a lot of open space, and I was happy to see that.
Is there a vision in place on what should happen along Penal Avenue, north and south?
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Powell, I did not...
I'm just asking, in spots, there's a lot of empty ground, and then there's busy ground, but the, do we have a vision on what we want to see where?
The vision that staff typically is utilizing is our 2030 general plan and the various land uses. It's the, it's the third slide, but as far as specific development, no. You know, I think it's the reason that I outlined the community corridor broadness is that it really gives the development community and the market the opportunity to really be, to actually execute a number of various elements.
So to be clear, tonight, we're looking at entering into contract to sell the land?
That is correct.
And there will be public hearings at the planning and zoning level? One?
There will, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, there will be public hearings on the zoning side of things, right? So with the zoning application, they will have one at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they would have one here at the mayor and council level as well.
Yeah, so we would have two more times to revisit their plan and see what it's, what their vision is for that. And one thing that helped me some, because I appreciate what Lisa said, because she's really looked into it, and we've talked about it as well, is that that southwest corner of Ghost Hollow and Penal is gonna be probably, most likely, we don't know, but rezoned for something, and that's like a gateway as well, which you would see driving into town, and this would be a landscaped area, which when we met with, via Zoom with this developer, we talked to them about really putting a good buffer along Penal Avenue, and it's not the whole stretch, it was just the southern part. So that helped me some as we go through this process, but also the fact that, you know, I talked to some people today that we haven't heard, and I says, yes, there's gonna be more opportunity to be heard. There's public hearings specifically. I think most people, more people are worried about what it's gonna look like, where the entrances are gonna be, what the traffic patterns are gonna be, which will come more at the zoning level, and then come back to the council after that, if I'm not mistaken.
Kind of goes back to vision, because you need to look at what we're trying to do.
It will be processed as a planning, as a rezone application, just like our other rezoning applications.
Yeah, but people will get an opportunity to come and see. And then another thing is the attainable housing, which is something that we've talked about needing, and manufactured housing gets a different, I won't say stigma, but, you know, different look at it. And there's some other places in town that are owned, each lot is owned by individuals, but this one's more of a managed-type park. I'm more familiar with RV parks, but I kind of equate it more to that style because... they can keep everything up and make sure that it's up to their standards, and with the background checks. And you answered the question about sublease, I guess it would be subleasing, and they said that that's not in their plan.
Correct.
But we can't probably get guarantees of their pricing or their plan, because that's a business decision on their point. So we just have to take them at what they're presenting to us and their track record.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, the information that I shared related to the cost of that particular model, they provided us with a copy of the invoice of what they are paying for, what the builder of the manufactured home is charging, and then they added the cost of the shed and the personal property tax and sales tax that would be levied on that.
Because what they shared with us is that they're not specifically trying to make a lot of money off the sale of the home.
That's right.
But they just want to get the right style home set on their lots to get the rent and have built that community. So.
Anyone else?
I have another question. Should I wait until the-
No, no. Talk now.
As far as the condition of the sale, so is that common practice for us to sell, you know, a piece of city-owned property? And with the condition, I mean, it seems like most of the times we go through the rezoning, public hearing process, and then this final sale. So I just want to see if this is common, and we do it often.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Fitzgibbon, from my perspective, it typically is going to depend on the current zoning and land use comparatively to the use of the developer at that point. And so there have been scenarios where it's perfectly aligned, you know, we, for example, the mayor and council approved some disposals of some property just most recently, and those are in alignment with what the developer wants to utilize them for. And so there's not been anything that's needed in order for that to be achieved. There has, I'll give you an example of something that's somewhat similar to the option three that was highlighted tonight. We went through the life-on-main analysis and got public input. That was never zoned at that point in time. It still holds the current zoning that was at the time that we went through that planning process. And the theory is that the market needs to have some flexibility and ultimately comes in with a specific zoning requirement that's necessary. So I think it really is going to be a little bit of both, I guess is how I would answer that this evening.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
So this land, we purchased to put a park in. Then we found that we had another 140 acres that was contiguous to our current large park, which made more sense to expand that park, and so then we purchased that park, with the understanding we were going to try and sell the other 120 acres that was up off of Panal. That was, discussions that were had in this chambers, and so that was the direction we kind of gave Larry to go. If you look at the total number of acreage and you divide, if you divide it by five, the 120, the smallest piece you're going to get it down to is 24 acres. And without a certificate of assured water, you can't put a house on it. You can't subdivide it any more than that. And so it doesn't lend itself to a whole lot of different purposes. And the way the developer has this divided up is there are 50 by 100 lots, so there are 1,500 square-foot lots. But in actuality, he's putting in one house for every quarter of an acre. So there's a lot of open space in this project, to your point, Bob. So really, you know, there's 40 acres to the north that is set aside for commercial, and 40 acres is bigger than the Frye's Shopping Center. All right? So that's a big piece of land right on Panal, and probably where a signal will be once that Ghost Hollow gets going. So I think in general, it's land we wanted to try and sell. It's land that we can get the money back into the city coffers that can be used for something else. And I think that it's good, it's good use of the land. I believe that the developer has good intentions. The design of the open spaces is good. There's a big setback from Panal. I doubt you'll even see the development, because most of it actually is in the back. It's a weird-shaped piece of land. So the majority of the acreage is in the back, which is even further away from Panal. So that's just my two cents on it. Obviously, we'll have an opportunity to vote on this or not. That'll be up to you all. So does anyone else have any other comments? All right. We'll stand adjourned. No more comments from you, Larry?
No, sir.
Done. All right, let's stand adjourned. We'll start at 7:30.